Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to our special committee of the whole meeting. First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. And I would like the agenda to be approved as amended, adding three items that we didn't get to last night, which are the overview of the 2017 to 2021 special projects, or sorry, the review of the deferred revenue sources funding 2017 to 2021 financial plan, the review of the reserves funding 2017 to 2021 financial plan, and the review of the core budget by department. If I could have approval of the agenda as amended, including those items that were deferred?
To move. Second.
All those in favor? Motion carried?
May I just make one minor addition to that? Chair Trace, which is, we noted that the building department is not listed under the review of core budgets, and they are quite a busy department these days, so we don't want to forget them. So on your agenda, you'll see there's a listing of the departments, fire protection and bylaw. If we could just ensure that we add the building department on there as well as one of our departments this evening?
So we'll need another amendment motion to include that? A second or? All those in favor? Motion carried? Next thing on the agenda is a presentation from the RCMP, business corps presentation for part-time watch clerk.
Good evening, Mayor Hamilton, council, and everyone else. Thank you for the opportunity for, to give myself and Sergeant Sandu the opportunity to, to speak to you and present our business case for a permanent halftime watch clerk. Before we get started, I should probably introduce myself a little bit. I'm the, Dennis Segorman, I'm the interim office manager at the Westshore detachment. And this is my, my partner in crime, Sergeant Raj Sandu, who is the operations NCO at the detachment. And so, a little bit about my background, I did 35 years with the mounted police in various detachments and capacities. Most recently, I was the commander at Sidney North Sanich. And then I finished my career off last July in the Island District downtown. And I was responsible advisory NCO for the eight detachments on the South Island. So, I got this gig in October of last year. The previous manager departed fairly quickly. The detachment was in a bit of a bind. And Inspector Cholman approached me, and I accepted a contract. It expires in April. I have agreed to carry on, and to June, we've got a number of significant projects that we're working on. And I just don't feel right about leaving at, at that time. So, and we're actively looking for a good person to, to replace me. So, without further ado, purpose of my visit here tonight is to request and for you to consider a permanent halftime position to augment our four watch clerks. What I'm going to break, basically do is break this down into five segments, and make it as easy and, and as quickly as possible, and, and get through this for you. So, what I'm going to do is talk about what we have now, as far as watch clerks and, and what you pay for, bit of what they do, the budget process, and how we came about to develop this business plan, the benefits for approval, and then just the impact if it's not approved. So, right now, the administration, as you probably all know, is fairly complex at the detachment with having two municipalities and two employers. Callwood looks after six positions, four are watch clerks, and then two court liaison. And one of those positions is actually split between two retired regular members. The watch clerks are unique in that they're the only admin staff that actually work 24 hours a day outside the core business hours. So we have these four clerks, they're attached to a watch, and they are an integral part of operations and our service delivery from our frontline members. And so those folks, four people, they work seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And so, that seat can never be vacant. And so, if somebody's sick, or whatever it is, we, we have to get, get somebody in there. So, what they do, so I'll give you a fairly brief, brief overview, and I don't understand everything they do, so please bear, bear with me. They, their jobs are very technical. They have to know a number of different business systems, different computer programs, and, and so, and, and some of their tasks are, are quite varied, and actually quite in-depth. So, one of the things they do, and it's actually a money saver for the, for the community, is that they do transcription, and it's not transcription that you would normally think. It's transcription when a file is created with our dispatchers, it's called a go. And, and then that has to be processed and moved through into our RMS, which is the record management system. Well, there's a cost to do that. In my previous detachment, we didn't have watch clerks, so we actually had to pay for that service, and it's in the thousands of dollars. So every transaction that's done, there's a, there's a cost associated with that. So that's one of the things they do, that's a, that's a cost saver. Some of the other things they do is they monitor various queues, which are basically file folders within the records management system. And they just ensure that files don't get, fall through the cracks, everything gets dealt with, members are assigned to, to, to the files. And then they also deal with a number of high-risk areas. And those are CPIC, which is basically, it's, it was our original program that we had, computer system, and that is dealing with adding warrants and, and removing of warrants for people, missing persons. And all that stuff has actually been downloaded to them. That all used to be done by the dispatchers, the OCC. And of course, over the time, everybody's looking to, to download their work and disperse it, and that's what's happened. So, that's been downloaded to them. They look after court communication, they look after our FIP entries, which is Firearms Interest to Police, and also our CAD Hazard Flag entries. Really, what those are in simplistic terms is that there's a hazard that can be associated to a person, a place, a thing. And it's an officer safety thing, so that if we've been to a place before that's been dangerous, or they're stopping somebody that, that is, we've dealt with on something, the members can be, can become aware of that. Those hazards have to be updated regularly, and they need to be accurate. They also provide correction to files, reports to Crown and Court. They work in Justin, which is the criminal records branch in our communication with the courts, and they do bylaw notification. So, there we are, in a nutshell, they do a lot more than that. I mean, they, they order equipment for the members, they maintain all the equipment that they sign out, their radios, and a, a number of other things, so. So this year, we've started to do our budget process. So I met with the director of finance, Andrea DeBucy, and we, we just looked at what happened last year, where we're spending our money. I think probably from her perspective, it's fairly simple. For me, it was a bit more complex. But we're really looking at, at areas such as overtime, use of casual hours, and training. And from my point of view, whenever I was, as a manager, as a commander, looking at, this is taxpayers' money. And we need to be efficient, and to be able to utilize the money in the most efficient way possible. So as we started to go through it, it was actually Andrea who, who actually noted that we were using quite a bit of overtime and casual hours. And so I happened, I explained to her that I did have a business case for a halftime clerk. And so as we started to crunch the numbers, we were looking at that we're spending about $60,000 on overtime and $70,000 in casual hours. And so, in the use of that, we looked at where that was going. So that was looking at things for vacation, sick leave, training, and other miscellaneous duties that would draw our watch clerks away from their, from their duties. So we calculated out, that was probably, works out to about eight weeks a year, when you factor all those in, for each watch clerk, that they're not in their, in their chair. So 32 weeks, doing the math, it's about 224 days, 448 shifts. And so, when I, when we looked at it, that's really expensive to cover that off, when you're paying people double time. And, and the other issue that we're having is, we're training people, and we're having a hard time retaining the people. So I, I arrived in October, and we had four casual relief workers. And since that time, we've lost four. I've hired two new ones, but they're also looking for full-time work. And that's really the environment we're in, is that we train people up, the training is very good. These folks, when they get trained up, they're actually well-positioned to actually transfer over to other detachments, and, and into almost any other duty within the detachment, certainly in the records administration part of the detachment, to do those jobs. So they're, they're, they've got some very marketable skills. So they're taking those skills with them, and they're leaving. We've actually retained two of them, and then two others have gone to other police departments to, to work and to gain full-time work. So, my thought is, is if we can provide at least halftime, we can retain some people. We're not having this constant merry-go-round of, of constantly training people, and, and then losing them. And so, when we figured out the money, we, it was, for a full-time person, all-in is about $85,000, halftime, $42,000. Well, I think we can make that up out of the $130,000 that, that we're spending on overtime. And in my view, there's some significant benefits to the approval. First, I mentioned the retention of the employees. We can also ensure coverage available at short notice. Certainly a cost benefit of, even if we can do half of these shifts, of putting somebody in the chair at straight time rather than double time. And then, from my view, is the intangible benefit of, we've got these folks that are really working hard, really dedicated, but they're burning out. They, you know, somebody, right now, I can't let anybody go, even on holiday, because I have nobody, I'm, I'm training some people, but I don't have anybody to put in the chair, so I have to tap on somebody's shoulder. Well, you've just worked four shifts, can you work two more? You know? And so, I really see that, it's just not sustainable. And so, I think this is a, a good way that we can utilize taxpayers' money better, so. And then finally, the impact if it's not approved is that we'll fail to retain casual employees, and I think we're just going to see costs increase. And then, I think the other thing that I actually haven't touched on is actually the workload. And I don't know about you folks, but anything to do with technology and stuff, doesn't necessarily make your life easier. And things are getting downloaded on, on these gals more and more. We're increasing the number of members in the detachment. And so, detached, and this is nothing new. Other detachments have gone through it. I know in Surrey, they've increased their, their, their contingent there, and they have up to six, I think it's seven, watch clerks per watch now. So they have probably 200 employees, municipal employees embedded in their, in their office. So, nothing new, it's just a, a function of, we're a growing community, and these are some of the growing pains. So, I think that's it. Do you have anything to add? Okay. So I'm happy to entertain any questions, if anybody has any, or?
Well, thank you very much. Does anybody in the audience have a question? Any committee members question? Counselor Day?
Thank you. I happen to have been here quite a while, so I was here when we first instituted the watch, the watch clerks. And, and I really did understand the reasoning at that time was, you know, why would you, you know, use a highly-trained RCMP officer to do, you know, what is, you know, a, a less risky job, so they don't need all those other skills? But I am curious why the watch clerks have to work 24/7?
They're providing a coverage, so we, there's nobody else to do, like entering warrants, removing people from the system. That happens 24 hours a day. So they're, they're actually attached, attached to the watch. We have to have somebody to do it. In the past, we could rely on the dispatchers to do it, not anymore. And so, it's basically, it's a detachment, it never sleeps. And so, this, this is actually a better way to do it. You don't want to be paying a regular member to do these functions, because the functions would have to get done. So this is certainly the most reasonable way to do it, for sure.
Okay. And then, if I, if I may, just to follow up, you mentioned the overtime budget and the casual pool that this is being balanced against. But what guarantee do we have that that won't just come, go up again?
No guarantees in life, I guess. I, I look at it as it's, it makes sense to me that if I can put somebody in the chair for, at straight time, and I can find somebody, we retain them, there's a cost saving to the organization. There's just, there's no two ways about it that I, I can see. There's some things that we can't, you know, if I have two or three of them quit tomorrow, I don't know what we'll do. And, and that's part of the issue, too, is there's a risk of not having the capacity to manage this. And, and so, I think this is a way, a bit of a way to mitigate it. Good question, no guarantees.
Okay. And I just have one follow-up question, and that is with regard to, you mentioned, you know, it's largely been Langford and Callwood who have been participating in providing watch clerks. There's also View Royal, and there is also a provincial component there for Michozen and for Highlands. So, I, I just am not quite understanding, are, are watch clerks being used for other, to support other areas of the department?
No. So there's six positions that Callwood pays for. My understanding is there's some sort of a funding formula with View Royal and the province. There's a One PS that works upstairs, and it's, the line shares the employers, it's, it's the city of Langford and the city of Callwood. And so the watch clerks are specifically assigned to their duties, they do not do anything else, other than they, I have one that provides training, because she's an expert. And so she, she does training, she trains the watch clerks, and she trains prime as well.
So I'm, I'm just wondering, who does the, the watch clerk duties for Highlands cases?
It would be, Callwood would do, would do it all. So they, they, they work, so it's just, it's very similar as, as the, the members. So you have a member that may be paid by, by Langford, well, it'll come, they'll come to a call in, in, in Callwood or View Royal. So it's not split up that way?
Right.
Okay?
Well, I, I guess I just have to say, I'm really uncomfortable with the way that that is shaking out. Because the, we, we all make our choices in terms of what funding level we will provide to the RCMP. And that includes how many officers we request, and it includes how many watch clerks we provide. And if our watch clerks are doing the work for Highlands and Michozen, then we are paying an additional burden of cost.
Yeah, but you have to understand that Langford is also paying for administration for managing files that occur in Callwood. So it's, we, we can't break it up that way, it's all one detachment. And, and so, for us, it doesn't matter where the call occurs, it's, it's going to be dealt with, and it's going to be managed, whether it happens in View Royal, happens in Callwood, or, or Langford. So everybody's doing their share, and there's a, a cost sharing, and it's a percentage that, that is done, that, that is equal between the municipalities. And it's probably based on, I haven't, I'm not privy to the books, but it's based, in my experience, on the number of members that each community provides.
Unfortunately, the, the, there are two municipalities who are providing a provincial component, not providing it in the same way we do. So, I'm sorry, I can't agree with you.
Okay.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I think it's a really difficult situation, given the structure of the detachment and, and the funding formula. And I think anecdotally, and my experience over the years, is that Callwood's probably receiving a bit of a deal in terms of the amount of funding that we provide relative to some of the other communities. And it, I, I think at the end of the day, it, it, it may balance out, Langford provides funding for, for a certain level of service that we all benefit from, and, and vice versa. So I, you know, I, I don't think there's any way to get around that unless we went to a different governance model for, for the detachment.
Absolutely.
It is what it is. I, I did want to say, because this is actually right up my alley, I am a manager of the Staff Scheduling Office for Island Health. And so we, the organization that I work for employs a similar attitude in terms of needing to retain skilled workers, and, and the ability to backfill at a moment's notice, to, with a skilled workforce. And so they've, Island Health has seen a benefit with having, we call them relief pool staff. So they, we have vacation relief pool staff, we have short notice relief pool staff, but they're there, they're already working, they're there to be deployed to a, a unit that needs them now, because someone's booked off sick.
Exactly.
And especially with a, you know, specialty unit, like the detachment, that sort of thing is crucial. And I, you know, I was around, too, when Counselor Day was when we, when we brought on the, the watch clerks, clerks, and it meant that the watch commanders were no longer having to stay in the office for their entire shift doing paperwork. They're actually now out on the road, which, that in itself is, is another benefit to the community. So I think if, what I'm seeing here is that there is, there's a cost benefit with regularizing this position, and, and simply for the trained, having someone that's trained and retained, and the ability to backfill. The, I think the key, the key to manage a position like this is, is managing their schedule, to make sure that it, it jives, and there's a level, that they're nimble enough to be able to, to backfill. And their schedule may change from time to time, depending on what, what a person's vacation schedule is like, so.
And that would be part of the job description?
Yeah.
Would be a floater, basically, that come in at a moment's notice.
Yeah.
So there's, and I think there's enough planning ahead, that we can plan for vacations, we can plan, and, and have this person available. So, like I said, we're, we're spending a lot of money now, and I, and I just think there's a better way to, to do that. And we're training people for a lot of other police departments.
Yeah. Well, that, yeah, exactly. At, at the end of the, the one year that this has been operational, do you anticipate studying the, the effects of the additional FTE? You know, so to, to measure whether it was?
Certainly, we need to sort of look at a cost benefit analysis, and that'll be part of the budget process of going, okay, well, where are we, have we saved any money here? What can we do to manage this better? And so, I thought this was a particularly good idea, and so, I would present it to you, and you guys can evaluate it and see what you think.
That's good. Thank you.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate you. It drives, it drives me nuts when I see overtime and the amount that we pay in overtime, and I, I often think to myself, why are we not just hiring somebody else instead of that overtime? So, I think, I think you're on the right path completely. The, the one question I have, but it might be to you, but it might also be to our finance staff, you mentioned that we're paying $130,000 roughly in overtime, and I'm wondering, oh, excuse me?
Overtime and casual hours.
And casual hours.
Yes.
Of that, how much of that is Callwood responsibility? Is it all?
Yes.
We're paying?
It's all because they're all our employees.
Right. So, so I guess, I, I guess this is my, no, I don't want to say argument, but I guess, hearing what Counselor Day said, because I do agree with it, you know, you're always trying to make sure that we're being cost-efficient, and it is frustrating, if you, if we feel as though we're taking on an additional burden that other municipalities are benefiting from, but our taxpayers are having to pay for it. But if it's our taxpayers already paying the overtime, then it, it totally makes sense that we would transition that to actually create a cost savings versus an additional liability. So, I think, I think this is great. I know, I think I already know your answer, so I apologize for asking this, but I have to ask it. If we come back next year, and I look at this, am I gonna, if I add those two numbers of, say, 42K in, in overtime, it's going to be less than 130?
Oh. My experience would say yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Counselor Knoll?
Yes, I agree with Counselor Martin, that if we're paying that much in overtime, this probably makes good business sense. One thing that does trouble me, though, I think this is probably the 14th budget on the city I've sat through and heard 14 RCMP presentations, and I think I've heard the same sentence on every single one of them, overworked due to the large volume of administrative requirements. But I never see a report from the RCMP saying what they're doing to reduce their administrative workload.
A good, a good question. Unfortunately, a lot of what we do is not driven by us. It's, we're driven by other departments, we're driven by Criminal Justice Branch, we're driven by the provincial government. By nature of our organization, or what used to be my organization, we've got several layers of government, and, and there is lots of bureaucracy. How to reduce that? I've spent 35 years in it, and I, there's no answer. They, every time they say we're, we're doing something to improve, and build some efficiencies, I think the product we deliver is better, but there's a cost for that. And, and really, I've seen over, over the years, you know, the systems are more complex, they're more technical, and I, I, when I had started, I mean, we're writing things out, and, and now, of course, everything's done in the car, and it's, it's all Gucci, there's no question. But that's not a driver by us, that's, that's, that's a provincial government that has dictated that, so. We, we need to be able to control our own budgets and, and manage, I guess, our sphere of influence as best we can, but there's a number of things that are outside our control.
Mr. Howard?
I just want to caution counsel that this is a very dynamic environment we're in. We're in a high-growth region of the capital region. And as much as we know with a snapshot today, that the halftime clerk will significantly reduce the overtime and casual time, it's going to only happen for a short time, because the workload's only going up. And I suspect that Dennis's successor will likely be here either a year from now or two years from now, asking to bump that halftime clerk to a full-time clerk, for the same, very same reason, to reduce the overtime and the casual use. And in another couple of years, we'll be having this other discussion again, because we are growing very fast. And anytime a region grows this quickly, there is a significant increase in demand in police services. So, just, I'm just warning everybody, don't expect that next year, that the person standing there next year is going to be able to say to you, we've saved $130,000, because that won't happen.
He knows me too well. Andrea?
Yes, and I, I just wanted to add another, both an encouraging note and a cautionary one. So I did encourage Dennis to speak to us this evening, because I looked at the fact that we have a $75,000 budget for casuals, and a $50,000 budget for overtime. And I wanted, so, the good news is, this is a very good management practice that we're recommending. It will allow some certainty in staffing. What happens right now is that Dennis and his crew are training these casuals up, they don't have a regular position, and they're gone. And so it's very hard to keep a trained, skilled labor pool available. So by adding this halftime position, it will backfill vacation time, sick time, training, all of those different things, and it should give them more continuity. It also saves some work for your Callwood staff. In our payroll department, we do a bit of HR off corners of desk. In our payroll department, we do a bit of HR off corners of desks. And I know that Catherine often goes over, assists with the interview process. We're constantly signing up new employees, then they move on. So overall, this is a real time saver administratively, it's much more efficient. The cautionary note is, you're not gonna see the overtime all disappear. And the reason for that is these clerks work 24/7. So when they work on a statutory holiday, per our union agreement, they have to be paid overtime for that. So it's not gonna wall evaporate that. There's certain things we don't have control over. But from what I can see, this should definitely pay for itself, and perhaps a little bit more, because we have such churn right now, and we don't always have the folks available, okay?
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is review of the deferred revenue sources funding for 2017 to 2021 financial plan. Andrea?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to say, first of all, before we dive into the details, to thank everyone, council, mayor, council, and staff members who were here last evening. It was a fairly long evening. I felt that we got a lot done. When I looked at the amount of detail that we waded through, I thought there was a good exchange of information and questions, clarifying things. So thank you very much for your attention and to staff for their input. So just a reminder, does everyone know what deferred revenue is? Money that we receive. And basically, it is deferred, the expenditure, until such times that money is needed, and then the revenue is recognized. Gas tax is the biggest one in there, okay? I am very happy to present these schedules tonight, because we're seeing some positive trends in total between our deferred revenues, which is what I like to call one set of our piggy banks, and our reserve funds. This, if you look in the book, the revenue, or sorry, the agenda package that you had last evening. Okay, yep. So what staff were working on fairly favorishly just prior to these agendas going out was making sure that all of the year-end entries had been made, so that when we purchased assets in 2016, anything that was funded from deferred revenue or from reserves, we've made those entries, so that we have accurate beginning balances, so we know how much money we have to start 2017 off, we know how much we've got to spend. The other thing that we then do is we do some projections in terms of how much revenue might be coming in. Those are those green cells there. And then the drawdown, when we went through all of our capital and special projects budgets last night, that money has to come from somewhere. So this is the piece that links all of that together. It shows you how much money we've got, how much is coming in from new development, and how much is going out to pay for various projects. We've given you details for 2017 and 2018, and just the ending balances for 19, 20, and 21. And the reason for that is, as we go further out, as I mentioned last night, is our projections can't be as accurate, and we're super conservative in terms of what we think is coming in. But the first thing I just wanted to draw your attention to, which is tied directly to development, is the road development cost charges that we are looking to collect. And this is based on the building permit projections that are put together. And along with that, we also project our road and sewer development cost charges and other amenity charges. Those are all levied, sometimes when we issue the building permit, and sometimes when we issue the development permit. So there's some significant revenues, as per our bylaws, that are forecast to come in for roads. Sewer, not so much, because as I've mentioned earlier, many of our areas in Callwood are not serviced by sewers. There's DCC, there's sewer DCC exempt. Well, then. Shall I carry on? You do have the information on paper, is that okay? So that's the top section, is our development cost charges. We're looking at beginning 2017 with about $3 million in hand. And between the ins and outs, five years down the road, we're projecting an increase of almost 1.2 million. Again, that's on the conservative side. And it depends on what projects we decide to do in the future. I can't foresee all of those either, that might use road DCCs. But this is a very positive trend. The deferred revenues, again, many of these, the biggest ones are tied directly to development. Good job for the technicians. Typical multitasking, thank you. The deferred revenues that are tied directly to development are frontage amounts that we collect, sidewalk, and I think those are the main ones. Gas tax is something we get directly from the government. Frontage improvements, we collect those in lieu of them doing the work. And I think I gave the example in a previous meeting, let's say we're putting in the Callwood sewer line. We've got, we know we're gonna be digging up this area where the developer should be putting in a sidewalk, say at Machulson and Painter Road in that neighborhood. We'll say, look, no point wasting your money putting in a sidewalk, we're gonna rip it up in the next little while. So we will collect some cash, in some cases, in lieu of sidewalks, in lieu of those frontage improvements. Just as a reminder, I think most of you have got that all down. And between the frontage and sidewalk improvements, we're not forecasting any big changes there. This is not, these are not accounts, we see a lot of activity, and we don't have any accurate way of predicting when those situations are going to arise. So we haven't forecast revenue there. And this year, we didn't actually have any projects we thought would draw down on them. So right now, they're, they're static, but that doesn't mean that can't change. And if anything, I would see they might grow a little bit. The, some of the other figures you see there are extremely, extremely small, and these are just sort of bookkeeping items we have to keep track of. Any money that is taken in from our heritage commission, whether it's sales over there of tea or different things like that, very small amounts of money, not a lot of activity. The legacy, the memorial, that's our benches. There's some activity in and out of there, but it's not, it's usually revenue neutral. The gas tax is probably the one that we'll come back and talk about a little bit. At the beginning of this year, we are fairly healthy at 2.4 million. And we do have a sort of a five-year agreement in place, and we don't see that money evaporating anytime soon. So we can count on a regular $731,000 coming in annually. And as we mentioned, I think in the February 20 budget meeting, we definitely need to get busy with our asset management plans, or we, that tap could be tightened up, and we won't be getting the same amount of revenue. We do have some very heavy drawdowns on that, where it potentially could be negative in five years out. But at this point, I'm not too concerned, because we have a lot of money between our deferred revenues and our reserves. The net difference is actually positive, it's actually going to be increasing. At this point, we are, basically, this budget this year is sort of a stay-the-course, a boring budget, as our CIO said. And then we will take a much closer look next year at some of the engineering projects, because we had a fairly lengthy debate on some of those last evening, to see what really needs to be done. And a lot of this will be built in conjunction with an asset management plan, because we will be having heavy drawdowns in other areas. So at the end of this page, sorry about that, the total amount that we have in our pot of money called deferred revenue, in total, including the development cost charges, 6.4 million on the far left and on the far right. We are looking at that dropping by 3.2, down to 3.2. But that is basically a function of the gas tax. And I think that as we fine-tune some of our projects, we will, obviously, we cannot spend more than we have in terms of gas tax, but there are some other areas where we can access funds. So if we can just turn our attention now to the next page, which is the reserve fund.
Excuse me, I have a question on the DCCs.
Sure.
DCCs for roads, are they based on our current bylaws, or your projection for a new DCC bylaw?
They are based on our current bylaws.
So when we rewrite that in the next year, that number could change quite dramatically?
Yes, I'm not the expert on that.
I'm gonna give you the diplomatic answer and say it might. There's so many factors, including the, many discretionary decisions that council has to be made on the assist factor, what projects are listed. So there's, there's so many variables involved in the bylaw preparation that council's gonna have to look at when we actually get that to council, that I can't, I can't say with certainty that it's gonna go up.
Okay, good question. Any other questions on that particular summary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question, as, how do we go about spending this? And I'll preface my question, is I think the city misses an opportunity when a developer is doing some frontage improvements, to finish what would, what may be 200 feet left to finish a block of sidewalk. You know what I mean? So, so I think if we were nimble enough to be able to say, you know, we'll partner with you while you've got your crew out to finish that block of sidewalk, then it would be a benefit. So I'm wondering if we went that road, no pun intended, would we utilize something like the frontage or the sidewalk fund to allow that to happen?
I don't know if I'm the expert on this one, I kind of scorekeep. But I believe that when we collect it, it has to be used fairly specifically for the purpose for which it was collected.
Yeah, I just look at, like, the sidewalk fund, that, that fund has been there for a number of years, and it's not projected to be spent anytime soon. So I'm thinking, well, why the hell have we got it in the bank if we're not willing to spend it on, you know, a sidewalk project? Because we can't use it for anything else.
Madam Chair, it's really not a lot of money either, at the moment.
I agree.
We really do need to build these reserves up, so that they're, they have a meaningful amount of money in them that we can actually do a real project with them. I'm not sure how much this would get us right now. It's, perhaps our Director of Engineering could give us a ballpark, but I would suggest it would be in feet, not in meters, you know, so.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you, I actually have two questions. The first is, with 6.4 million dollars, where is the, are we collecting interest on that? And if we are, is it just going in the general revenue, or does it go back to the specific fund? Or how does, how does interest get allocated?
So interest revenue earned is proportionately allocated, based on the average balance. And any deferred revenue that has restrictions, for example, gas tax, we do allocate interest directly to that balance. For deferred funds that don't have specific restrictions, that interest is just received in the general operating fund.
In the general, okay.
Yeah.
The other question I have, which is so stupid that I'm even asking this question, but it's, because it's 6.4 million, I'm asking a $8,000 line item. Why, why do we have, why is, why do we have that $8,000 in the legacy? Like, would, I understand that it's for benches and stuff, but does that mean we haven't actually bought the benches that people asked for? Or what is the, what is the legacy memorial?
So the city has this legacy memorial program, and part of what, if an individual comes forward and they want to pay for a legacy memorial bench, they are required to contribute, it's about up to $1,000, towards maintenance costs of that bench. And so the city, every year, we look at the time spent by our public works crew, and we recognize a piece of it. So I think this program came into existence two or three years ago. So there hasn't been a ton of activity, but that is reflected of the cash that we have received from residents. And then we draw down to cover the costs of maintaining the benches in Callwood.
So that number actually does get drawn down every year?
It does. It's very nominal, this year it was $700.
Any further questions? Okay, let's go look at the next pot of money. Reserves. So this is a happy story. So we're looking at, after we do all of our entries, to recognize where we pulled money out of the reserves in 2016, almost $8 million for a beginning balance in 2017. And then this year, we're hoping to put close to $2 million back into our reserves, offset by $832,000, which is to fund the various capital projects and special projects that we went through last evening. And we are trying very hard that when one-time revenue, one-time revenues, such as the increase in building permit revenue comes in, that we're putting it immediately into a reserve. So that as our costs increase, due to, say, additional staffing, some of those permanent cost increases, and they will, as our CIO has warned, whether it's pressure from additional RCMP members, there will be permanent cost increases, but we will be doing our level best to line those up with the permanent tax revenue increases that are generated from that new construction. So some of these reserves are statutory, council has passed bylaws, and they're very specific in terms of what the money can be used for. Some are a little bit looser in terms of what the money can be used for. So I don't know if I'm gonna go through them all. I think the numbers speak for themselves, which is, right now, with pretty conservative forecasting, we're looking at them increasing up to 6.7 million. Now, having said that, there will be other projects that come along. And if we were to combine the net increase and decrease between these two pots of money, which is what I always do, which is go to the very bottom line. So we're looking at drawing down our deferred revenue by 3.2 million, but our reserves are going up by 6.7. And that's, that's good, because this is, I think, the first time I've seen some really positive trends here in terms of our, increasing our reserves. It doesn't mean, you know, we will continue to have to be very vigilant and ensure that we seek grants at every opportunity, because when I look at some of the projects, say, three years out, particularly in our engineering department, and it's all infrastructure, whether it's adding sidewalks, adding bike lanes, or just maintaining what we already have, there's real cost pressures coming at us. And that will be our challenge, is to measure how much those cost pressures will be, and how will we fund it? So this is why, this is not a sexy budget, as we said the other night. This is really trying to set the groundwork in place for how we're going to try and measure and manage, sorry, both the revenue and the expense side that's being driven right now by growth in the city. A couple of things. I'm trying to anticipate some questions here, but maybe, maybe I'll just, just give you a minute. You may have some questions, rather than me trying to guess what they might be. So I'll just take a pause. Any questions from the public?
Counselor Day?
I was just curious, I'm not following along very well, I guess, but I understood that our net change at the end of our planning was to be ahead by 6.8 million. But I didn't see the drawdown you mentioned of 3 million.
There's two different schedules. So the first schedule we just looked at was deferred revenue.
Right.
And it is going down over five years, approximately 3.2 million, and that's basically...
Oh, okay.
I'm just looking at the very, very, like, these are our two big pots of money.
Yeah.
And I'm marrying them and going, what's the net difference?
Okay.
And it's positive by a few million. Good.
Counselor Martin?
You, I actually don't have any questions, but I'd just like to congratulate our finance staff for working towards this. And just, so that, just for information purposes, I was looking at Bay's budget this year, and they have over $75 million in reserves. So it's, it's quite clear how far we're behind. So I very much appreciate that we're moving in this direction, so.
Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions? Nope, there being none. Continue on. Okay, so I'm just having a quick peek at the agenda, and I'm just... Okay, so I'm just having a, a quick peek at the agenda and I'm just, I'm looking for a bit of direction, um, from council and Ian, if you wanna weigh in. We've basically gone through, last night we did a very, actually quite a detailed review of, we touched on core budgets quite extensively. We looked at the summary. We've now looked at the big picture, which is our capital and our special projects. And looking for some direction on council, if you're happy with what you're hearing, if you would like to possibly make some motions to approve a few things, I'm just wondering what you'd like to do here.
Madam Chair, uh, the Director of Finance and I talked about this a little bit and we're, we were worried that we'd go through all the presentations and at 8:30 at night, after three hours of looking at numbers, we'd turn to you and say, okay, can you give us some direction? So we're thinking before, before we can go through core again, because we, we went through it to some degree last week and we went through it, uh, yesterday. And today, the intent was to go into more detail, but, uh, we thought it'd be best to stop, entertain some questions, comments, uh, council can have some debate, perhaps give us some direction before we get too late into the evening and everybody starts to, uh, jumble numbers together, because it can get a bit much, so. That's, uh, really what we, what we thought would be an appropriate choice of action, but it's entirely up to you folks how you wanna handle this.
Does the committee have any comments or questions or motions to make at this time?
I'm sorry, this is in regards to what we saw last night?
Well, the entire, the entire, uh, budget. So we've, we're presenting to you a complete budget. The, I think the most discretionary areas was what we went through yesterday, the special projects and the capital. So I guess the first, the first thing is, uh, are you satisfied with tho, with those lists of special projects and capital projects? Is there things you wanna delete or add to those lists? That would be, I guess, first question and subsequent motions if there was changes. The second is, uh, do you have cause for concern around where core is? If you do, uh, then we should talk about, uh, potentially what those concerns are. Is there cuts that council wants to contemplate in core? If not, um, we, we believe, and I, I'm very biased in this particular case, I think staff believe that we've, uh, put together a very good core budget this year. And, um, and unless council's contemplating some change to core, which we, we would never be aware of, we'd prefer that, um, council focus their attention on the most discretionary areas, which is the special projects and the capital. And if you're satisfied with the tax increase and satisfied with those projects, then direct us to proceed with the bylaw. And, uh, and then we prep that for a council meeting.
So you're looking for direction from council to, uh, direct staff to prepare the budget bylaws at this time, if they're, if they're ready to do that?
If, if council doesn't want to make any changes and if council's comfortable with what's been presented. So if you've got sufficient clarity around what's been presented, then absolutely. But, uh, we're here to, to, um, make sure that you're satisfied and comfortable with, uh, with proceeding to that level.
Mary Hamilton?
So, in last night's conversation, Counselor Martin spoke up around the summer student program and, and the potential of including, uh, dollars that were not presently listed in there. Is that what you're looking for is if, whether we're going to include that or not? Although I understand we missed the boat on, on that program anyway, so it's a moot point, but there were other conversations around different specifics. Is that what we're getting to? So kind of review back, folks, was there things that stuck out that you need to, to, um, look, take a look at?
Counselor Knoll?
Yes, thank you. Uh, staff kind of had a chat with me at supper time, um, on the student grants. And I guess the only grant available would have covered half of minimum wage and we're too late to apply for that. So, uh, putting that in the budget would be silly. We would get very little amount of work out of anybody for the amount of money that was, was budgeted. What I would really like to see us do is to, uh, leave the money for the student, the amount of money for the student in, but instead make that available to, uh, grant to the green team. Because we have an awful lot of work out of them and, uh, I think they have more projects planned in Callwood over the next year. So I would like to make that motion. I think it was 15,000 a year, was it?
Do we have a second for that motion?
I, I'll second for discussion, um, but, uh, just wondering how, how that can be accomplished. Maybe staff could assist us.
Madam Chair, it, uh, council can, uh, direct staff to add 16,000 dollars to the grant and aid specifically for the green team and, uh, and we'll, we'll make that happen.
Yeah, I don't remember how much we, we
Just, I'm just looking that up as you're talking.
Excellent. So, um, and, and the other thing, uh, that I would like to be sure of is that if we're, um, doing that for the green team, uh, let's, you know, green team and/or Hat, uh, for, for projects in Callwood, volunteer projects in, in Callwood, so that we can get the materials. But, green team's great. They, they work with Hat, so I think you probably get two for one anyways, but.
If I may, I'll just, for information for your discussion, so I've just had a quick look at what we awarded at our grant and aid meeting. So it was $4,800 to the green team. They had not been receiving anything the year before, so you awarded 4,800 grant and aid. And you awarded 2,500 to the Habitat Acquisition Trust or Hat, and they had not received anything previously. Counselor Knoll?
Uh, what were their requests? As I recall, we had a fair amount of back and forth over.
Just one moment. I'm trying to run the mouse with my left hand and I'm apparently not ambidextrous.
So, um, the, the, I'm not sure where Counselor Knoll, I'm not sure what staff member he was talking to, but I know for a fact it's, they, they federal, the federal grant pays minimum wage. It doesn't pay half a minimum wage, so I'm not sure who told you half, but it, it actually is. So, uh, because, you know, unless we're looking at different grants, because, uh, like I, I go through this with West Shore Park and REC because we hire like 12 students a year for summer camps. So I, I'm pretty familiar with, with that one, but, so it might just be a different grant then. But, uh, sorry, go ahead.
I can, we can only look at one thing at a time, so we'll report back first.
Oh, yeah, okay, go ahead.
The Hat folks asked for 2,500 and got 2,500. The green team asked for 4,800 and got 4,800. And Ross did just send us today a bit of a summary on the cost of the summer students, so we're just about to drag that up on the screen for you.
So my point, uh, that I wanted to make was last year's budget, part of, part of where I was driving for wanting it to be forecasted into the 2017 and future was because we missed last year's grant application. So the idea was get it in the books, get it in the minutes, so that we knew and remembered to apply for it. We missed it. And what I'm afraid of is if we transition and do something else, give it to the green team, give it to anybody else, we'd run into this exact same issue this time next year, because we're talking about budget next year and the grant application ends January 14th or 23rd or whatever the date was. So I guess my, I, I philosophically strongly support the idea of bringing on student, co-op students. And if we can get federal dollars to, to offset our costs and give them work experience within a municipal environment, I think that's a benefit to everyone. And I would want to somehow memorialize that we need to make sure that we're, we're actually paying attention and, and applying for those grants when those dates are. And that would be my only fear about us transitioning to something else, to green team or to anything else, that there isn't something in place that as we transition for the summer of 2018, that we remember when to apply and, and put those processes in place.
Mr. Hat?
Madam Chair, if, uh, if it is council's intent to, uh, memorialize, uh, a student grant, um, employment opportunity with Callwood, then I would suggest in your motion that you direct staff to add it to the core budget so that, uh, we aren't putting this in special projects every year. It's just, becomes part of our routine work.
Can we have a motion on the table? Should we?
I would be happy to amend my motion to read, um, given that Hat and Green Team both got exactly what they asked for, for this year to put the money in a reserve should anybody else ask for money? And to direct staff to put that amount in the core budget for the next four years after this, if it's too late to apply for students this year.
Got a second there on that amendment?
Second.
So, Carol?
Clarify the first part of that, uh, Counselor Knoll. I didn't quite hear.
Okay, uh, we had, I believe, what was 15,000?
If, if I may, Madam Chair, we've just projected up some costing that our public works manager has done, and if you can't read it, I, I can read it out. Can you folks read it? Basically, the costing, um, that's been done is actually for only two months. We do have a union contract that directs us that we have to pay X amount per hour plus benefits. It runs close to 30 bucks an hour. And, um, the amount that we determined would be coming back was relatively minimal, so the net cost to Callwood for two students for eight weeks was $20,000.
Boy, I would have loved getting a $35 an hour salary when I was in school.
So we have two motions on the table. The first motion, um, who voted on the first motion? All those in favor? Which is to put the money into the green?
No, 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 Jason modified it, then I just didn't quite catch the
Oh, the, the motion was to take the money for this year and make it available should anybody apply for a different grant. Like, Green Team and Hat got what they wanted already, so have that pot of money in case, as a reserve fund, in case another group or shore cleanup or somebody came forward looking for money. But after this year, have it as a core budget to hire students.
Cynthia, you seconded the first motion. Do you agree with?
No.
Sorry?
I seconded the amendment.
Oh, the amendment. So we'll
So we're good?
We're good? So we'll have a vote on the motion?
We, I think we'll
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Through the chair. So I, I'm just looking for clarification, because if we allot, say, 16,000 for the students and, and sorry, so how much are we allotting right now?
That was what I was wanting to clarify from council, because $20,000 only buys you 16 weeks of time. And just, I just wanna remind you that we're paying almost the full amount of money that we pay a park's laborer. So just think about that, what, what you're, what you're getting. And right now, this money is not in the budget, so part of your motion should be that, you know, you want this to be included in the 2017 budget. Staff didn't put it in because, to be honest, we thought we were being cheeky enough, asking for a, an one full-time position. So that's why the student wasn't there. It wasn't a deliberate omission or anything. It was like, wow, we're already asking for an additional full-time position. So we, we have got that in the budget. So just wanted to make council aware of what it is you're actually getting and what you're paying for. So it's $20,000 if we get this small grant, and that buys us basically 16 weeks of time. What, what has costed out here is two students, but they're only working eight weeks in total, so I'm just giving you the total. 16 weeks is what $20,000 buys you for one person. Any other comments?
Thank you. Through the chair. So my understanding from discussions last night was that we wanted a, uh, a student at least, so one. So I kind of thought we were going with one and that we wanted them to work for longer, so four months instead of two. So I'm just wondering, I'm not sure if that can be answered tonight. Would it make a financial difference if we just had one student, but instead of two months, it was for four months?
That was going to be my question to staff, given the discussion last night, which said the training time for the student, basically at two months ate up half of their, their work schedule, so I would much prefer to see one student for four months than two for two. If, if you're hiring a university student, their summer stretches from May to September.
Mary Hamilton?
As much as I support the idea of, uh, along, uh, Counselor Martin's, uh, thoughts on hiring the student, this doesn't seem to be fitting the, the mold in which we kind of figured it to be, that it would be, you know, 50% our cost and 50% federal cost, because we have alternative policy that dictates what those positions get paid. So going by the numbers that are on there, it's, you know, more like three quarters us or, and, and less than a quarter, being paid from, from any other source. It looks like it's a bit of a crapshoot for this year. I'm just wondering if it might be a time for us to, and I, and I'm not wondering if, if we can get that inserted into core, so we're not at this point again next year, but with a zero on it for 2017 and then moving to 2018 with the 16,000. But allowing us the time now and, and staff or whoever's, you know, can take a lead on it, it could be even council, to investigate through commotion or other, uh, Royal Roads programs that have the specific horticultural aspects to that, where they're out in April, start in July and out in April. And we might be able to create some sort of a, of a next steps, training, co-op, like work experience or something along that line.
Mr. Hat?
Madam Chair, um, I think I'd, I'd, I'd like council to think about, um, what their primary motivation for this is. If, if it's council's intent to provide training opportunities to students, that's fantastic. And if that's the case, then we should really And if that's the case, then we should really look at shorter terms, more students, with the intent that we are providing work experience, training opportunities, and things of that nature for, specifically for students. If you think this is for the purposes of being efficient and delivering services, it's not. So, trying to struggle over one, one student for eight weeks or, or two students for four weeks, or whatever that is, I really don't think it's important to staff. I think it's, it, it needs to be important to council to provide those training opportunities, and that should be the motivation for doing this, nothing else. And I just wanted to get that out there.
So, you know, I, maybe I'm not sophisticated enough because I don't understand parks enough. I pictured parks being that, we have enough parks in the Callwood that are not maintained to a level that I think anybody would like. I mean, obviously, if you have more money, you're able to throw more stuff at it and, and make the parks better. I pictured, I didn't think it would be very difficult to, to bring on a couple students to be in lawn cutting and, and grass cutting and, and freeing parks up to actually do the, the more intensive work that needs higher training versus the, you know, lawn clippings and, and those things along. Obviously, I'm hearing from staff that that's not, and so I, I'm happy to retract that. And, and then, you know, we'll, we'll go in a different direction with that. It's, I just, I, I know that parks is constantly, I've constantly seen that parks would like to have more staff and would like to, you know, be putting more money into those things. And I, I thought this would be a good opportunity for us to actually maintain it over the summer months, but obviously, what I'm hearing is that's not the case.
Any further comments or questions? Can we have clarification on what the current motion that is on the table for purposes of voting?
It sounds as though there's a motion to move money, which hasn't been specified, to the core budget, and to ensure that if we don't spend it this year, that it's available for next year via reserve.
No, I think Counselor Nault, if I made him repeat it, so I'll, I'll make sure that I got it right. That the money that we were anticipating for student be moved into the grant reserve in case there was anybody that wanted, that came up throughout the year, as we have had last year, that we would have a reserve pool there available, and that next year it would go to Core.
We don't actually have a grant reserve. I think what we might want to do, is the suggestion I heard a couple minutes ago, is that we will ensure that there's a line item in there called, if this is council's wish, after you consider the CIO's recommendation, you want students, we'll put that line item in there. It'll have a zero-dollar amount, and then next year, when we do up our budget, we will allocate whatever amount council would like. Right now, we haven't allocated anything. It doesn't sound like you're going to put anything in for this year. So, I'm just trying to, because I'm trying to figure out that you pass a motion that's possible, we don't have a grant reserve?
We did last year.
We only had a budget item for, a line item for grants.
Okay.
It would mean increasing our grant budget number and making that money.
Grant, grant aid budget?
So, to clarify, we're looking to increase the two thousand seventeen grant and aid budget by sixteen thousand dollars and to carry that for each of the, for this year?
And then next year, it was, that it would, that sixteen would then be Core.
The grant and aid budget is within Core, but do we mean in two thousand eighteen we'll move it from a grant and aid line to, to a student's salaries and benefits budget within parks? Okay.
Okay, can I call the question? Motion not carried. Did council, did council want to make another motion of any kind? No? Okay.
Still looking for comments? I, I will just offer this up, now that we're actually seeing significant new construction revenue in the city. So this year, we realized two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of new tax revenue. And I'm not suggesting we have that discussion during this process, but I would certainly request that we have a, a, a policy discussion before the next budget cycle to determine how we, we want to allocate the additional revenue that's seen from new construction. This year, I mean, there's been an assumption made, but this year it was used to staff a couple of new positions. But I think the taxpayers are expecting to see some benefit from the addition of, of these developments. And, so, you know, I think we just need that, that discussion in terms of how we want, how, how the taxpayer expects to see the benefit through their, the increased tax revenue, whether it might be a, a project or, or whatnot. But I, I, you know, it's, it's a happy place to be in. I just don't want any assumptions to be made without having a discussion at this table on how to spend the additional revenue.
Any further comments? Counselor Nault?
Yes, further comment on the RCMP request for a halftime clerk? I still have mixed feelings about that because we heard we're going to spend this extra money for an extra half person, but no committal to not spending as much on overtime or relief So where is the benefit for the people of Callwood? I don't really see that because we're going to be paying the same amount to the RCMP budget plus this extra person, because the RCMP has not committed to, at least for this year, reducing their overtime and casual. So, I think I would like to see the extra clerk dropped from the, from the budget.
Counselor Day?
It's a hard one for me because I understand Counselor Nault's frustration with that one. However, I, for me, it's one of those ones where I kind of have to hold my nose and, and do the right thing. We want to have good service for, for our residents who are, who have an interaction with the RCMP. It irritates me greatly that we have so little control and just by nature of it being a blended service, providing service to all municipalities in the West Shore. And, you know, their priority is life safety, and they don't care, you know, which officer they grab, when the call comes in, they're going to roll and do what needs to be done, which is commendable. But at the end of the day, I am very interested in seeing some measures put in place to ensure that there's equity of cost for the services that are required. But at the same time, I'm, you know, I have to say, I can see a tangible benefit to putting in this halftime position for the watch clerk to reduce the overtime. Will it reduce it forever? No. I think it will reduce it for at least this year.
All I was saying is I would like to see that guaranteed in the budget, and the RCMP was not willing to give us that guarantee. So it sounds to me like we're paying the same thing we did last year, plus this extra person, and that's what we're budgeting for. So I really don't like that one a little bit.
Mr. Hatt?
Madam Clerk, if it's council's concern around the spending of overtime and casuals, then if that's the only concern around not hiring the halftime position, then I'd ask council to direct us to reduce the, the casual and overtime budgets by the amount that is needed to fund that halftime person. So the net effect on the budget is zero.
That sounds very reasonable, and I would be happy to make that motion. And I understand that that's probably going to change in two thousand eighteen, but for this year at least, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Any comments on that? Committee? All those in favor? Motion carried? Counselor Day?
I just wanted to ma, I, I tried to get your attention earlier and failed. Just wanted to speak to the, the issue of the, of the hiring of students. My goal in, in that was not, I mean, it's nice to hire students. It's, it's especially really nice if we could get a grant to, to hire students. But my goal is much more of an interest in supporting our parks. So I, I would be very hopeful that we could work with the Green Team and Hatt and others to do events that are helpful to parks. And in future years, I think I would like to hear more from staff in terms of how they would like to, I think we were kind of getting into micromanaging a little bit around the table, so I would like to hear from staff as to how we could integrate with the Green Team and Hatt, because both of those agencies provide really good experience for youth, and we could certainly develop ways to provide references and other things that are of benefit to students from, from Callwood who might choose to participate.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Martin?
In two thousand sixteen, I didn't talk about this last night, but I didn't get an answer, so I thought I'd ask. Two thousand sixteen, we had budgeted over five, for five years, the carbon offsets, and I don't see anything in our special projects on carbon offsets. And, and I'm just wondering how that, that sort of dropped off the five-year?
I am, with the thousands of numbers we've just been looking at, I, I'm just wondering if we move that into Core, because we started to look at things and we said if it's happening every year, it should be in Core. And it's funded from Core, from carbon offset monies?
Well, it, it's, it was seven thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars was budgeted for two thousand seventeen last year, and then it's seventy-eight hundred and then seventy-nine fifty-six, and then eight thousand one hundred and fifteen.
Okay.
We can come back.
Do you think, yeah.
I, I, I just wanted to pose that question. The other one was, we had budgeted close, basically, seventy-five hundred dollars a year for traffic counts. Has that gone into Core?
Sorry, for traffic which?
Okay, so it, it shifted. Okay, this is as long as it's there. And the final thing is, I will not be supporting the new parks employee if it doesn't seem like, what I'm hearing is the students don't work, and, you know, I can't, I can't justify us putting a, a halftime and full-time employee into something where it would be cost-efficient to, to be having somebody else working within the four months. So it doesn't make any sense to me that we're, we're going to shift to a full-time salaried employee and not have a, have anything in place to at least be getting some offsets through the federal government, through other employees.
Any other comments or questions? Russ?
We are about to take over Latoria Boulevard, Carandale Island Highway. All the boulevards were major, major.
Oh, yeah.
Draw and order stop. The amount of time it's going to take to maintain these to the standards that we want to see. We either need to, A, bring in students, or B, which my suggestion was a full-time position split in two, so we could have somebody from May through October, the prime growing season, the time work season, the time season when we have staff on holidays, different things like that. I found it just incredibly tough last year to maintain. Without realizing that you guys had that five-year plan for the student, I thought, well, I'll ask for the full-time position and not bother asking for the student. In the end, we need one, if not both, for city maintenance. So, the student last year was brought on by council, and that was just a council decision on that night, and a number was just thrown out, sixteen thousand dollars. Sixteen thousand dollars got us two students for a month and a half, and pretty much that entire month and a half they spent on Latoria Road. That's what it's going to take to keep that looking good down there. So, I really do think we need some help out there. We're going to see some of the service costs dropped.
Mr. Hatt?
Counsel, there's, there's several things that push services in Callwood. The big one is growth. So if, if we're not responding to growth, so we're not suggesting that this additional staff member in parks is an addition to service, we're talking about maintaining council's current level of service. And we have to add bodies to maintain current level of service when council's adding additional parks and beautification projects to Callwood. So if council doesn't want to fund this, and that's entirely up to council to do, you're making a decision to cut service. And I just want to make that really clear, that you're not, you're not, not adding a staff member, you're cutting service to parks. And I just want to make that really clear.
Counselor Nault?
Yes, when we reviewed the new Meadow Park in, in Parks and Recreation, it was made very clear to us that this was going to be a major workload. Having toured the first part of the park, I see it's going to be even bigger than we had envisioned as far as workload goes, given the number of native plants and the amount of work it's going to be to keep that invasive free and so forth. So I went into that park adoption under the assumption that between that park and all of the other new parks coming into Callwood, that our Parks and Recreation budget was going to increase. So I just don't see that we have any choice but to, as the CIO pointed out, we either cut services or we hire extra people. And I'm all for hiring the extra person. I would have liked to have seen students as well, because I think while they might not be the most efficient workers, it's a very good experience for the student, and it's very good PR for Callwood. Council has already voted on that, so I will just leave it at that.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Nault. In fact, if you weigh the comments that the public has had during the official community plan process, they said that parks are way up here on their list and, and the maintenance of parks. So I think adding one person is, to me, probably pretty damn conservative. And, and, you know, in fact, we should probably be considering some more assistance, especially when we look at Machozen Road coming on, in, in addition to what has been outlined today, as well as the improvements to Callwood Creek. And the park staff have done a hell of a job with the budget that they've been allocated over the last year. So, just, just a little perspective, I, I think we could probably go a little heavier in parks, quite frankly. Thanks.
Great. Thank you through the chair. Through my discussions with staff, I think these two Great. Thank you through the chair. Through my discussions with staff, I think these two halftime positions for parks is essential. All the boulevards and parks that we're taking on, I've been told that alone in irrigation, we could have one full-time employee taking care of that. Another part is the students. So, my goal with the students is not to be in place of staff, sorry, or a, a parks employee. I see it as an additional opportunity to train and maybe even build that seasonal workforce. So, students, they have a summer, they go back to school, and it would be nice at the end of their education that they might consider a, a position as we grow with Callwood. So, that's what I was looking at. I see the students as an additional part and that we do need these two halftime positions for parks. Thank you.
Any other further comments? Okay. Did we want to continue on then, Andrea, with the review of the core budget? Okay, so I just wanted to remind council what we did last year, which was we did it in sections. And it was similar, like we, we said, just hold off on the motions till you sort of get the big picture. So, we've given you the big picture. Would it be easier if we gave you some suggestions that you say, okay, we're all right with the capital projects as presented totaling X amount? Can we have a motion for that? Do something similar for projects. I'm just suggesting a structure. Are we prepared to direct staff to prepare the bylaws? Somebody want to make that motion?
I would so move.
Second.
Counselor Martin?
So, we're, sorry, we're preparing the bylaws before we're going through Core? We're not going to do anything on Core? Is that just what I'm hearing? Wow, okay. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Call the question? All those in favor? Those against? Motion carried. You want to proceed on now, Andrea, with item 3.3?
Oh.
We're done, aren't we? We don't want to cover that? Okay, we're done? Okay, want to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Motion carried.